Hi, I'm Jennifer I from the Atlanta City Council, representing District 6 and this year's Chair of the Finance Executive Committee.
Do you have a question, comment, or a suggestion related to the City of Atlanta's proposed fiscal year 2021 budget? The Atlanta City Council wants to hear from residents and stakeholders. Which services do you feel need to be prioritized in the fiscal year 2021 budget, which begins July 1st? The general fund budget is set at $673.4 million. There are several ways to reach out and submit your questions and comments to the Council today and during the virtual Town Hall meeting Tuesday, June 2nd at 6:15 p.m. Send your email to budgettalk@atlantaga.gov. If you'd prefer, you can submit a video of your question, as long as it's 15 seconds or less. For social media, tweet us @ATLCouncil using the hashtag #ATLBudget. Submit your questions by messaging us on our Facebook page @ATLCouncil. To call in your questions, dial 404-546-1928, or you can text us at 404-548-2885.
We know how important the city budget is to you. We welcome your thoughts and your feedback. Thank you.
I'm Phyllis Jackson. Thanks for joining us for Stay at Home Connect. There's growing concern about COVID-19-related strokes in otherwise healthy young adults under the age of 50. Doctors say coronavirus can cause unusual blood clots, which lead to stroke. I spoke with Dr. Priyank Kondewal, a vascular and endovascular interventional neurologist with Rutgers University in New Jersey.
Some of these patients, which are young patients, have just a minor cough, you know? Some of them have just some chills and rager. And for the most part, they're called asymptomatic. And all of a sudden, they have this onset of, you know, left-sided weakness, and they can't talk, and they're confused. We don't know the timeline yet. We're looking into that as well. When this COVID-19 suspected, it happens, you know, we're asking the family members or the patient history if they can, when you started to have this first cough, or when you started to have these chills, or when you came in contact with the person who was on COVID positive, and when you had a stroke. The theory is that it happens usually early on because of the inflammation associated with that.
The American Heart Association wants you to know the signs of a stroke using the acronym FAST: face drooping, arm weakness, speech difficulty. Time to call 911. MARTA employees receive a generous donation of face masks from Ludacris and the Ludacris Foundation, Michael Williams and the Make Wishes Matter Foundation, and Atlanta Sewing Style.
We're going to get about $3,000, probably more than that, so we can give a mask to every single frontline employee. We've got some of the MARTA colors, they're super comfortable, and we're just excited to be supported by our community and make sure that we're recognizing our frontline employees.
Atlanta City Council member Joyce Shepherd joins with local developer Michael Abibi and the City Solicitor's Office to distribute special packages for seniors at the Columbia High Point Apartments. They handed out coloring books, games, puzzles, and face masks. That's a wrap on Stay at Home Connect. Have a great night.
Hi, I'm Jennifer I from the Atlanta City Council, representing District 6 and this year's Chair of the Finance Executive Committee.
Do you have a question, comment, or a suggestion related to the City of Atlanta's proposed fiscal year 2021 budget? The Atlanta City Council wants to hear from residents and stakeholders. Which services do you feel need to be prioritized in the fiscal year 2021 budget, which begins July 1st? The general fund budget is set at $673.4 million. There are several ways to reach out and submit your questions and comments to the Council today and during the virtual Town Hall meeting Tuesday, June 2nd at 6:15 p.m. Send your email to budgettalk@atlantaga.gov. If you'd prefer, you can submit a video of your question, as long as it's 15 seconds or less. For social media, tweet us @ATLCouncil using the hashtag #ATLBudget. Submit your questions by messaging us on our Facebook page @ATLCouncil. To call in your questions, dial 404-546-1928, or you can text us at 404-548-2885.
We know how important the city budget is to you. We welcome your thoughts and your feedback. Thank you.
Can one girl in a small town, an architect in a major city, and a suburban high school coach shape the future of the United States? Yes, they can, because every 10 years, the Census gives us that power. You can shape your future by responding to the 2020 Census. Where do we need new roads to make our lives easier? Where will new school programs help our children thrive? Where could a new health clinic benefit neighborhoods? The 2020 Census will inform these decisions and shape how billions of dollars will be distributed to communities like yours each year. And in 2020, you can respond to the Census online, by phone, or by mail. It's easy, safe, and important. Make sure you and everyone you know is counted. Now is the time for you to get involved. Your community needs you. Together, we can educate and excite, inspire and make sure every voice is heard. Together, we can shape our future.
Hi, I'm Jennifer I from the Atlanta City Council, representing District 6 and this year's Chair of the Finance Executive Committee.
Do you have a question, comment, or a suggestion related to the City of Atlanta's proposed fiscal year 2021 budget? The Atlanta City Council wants to hear from residents and stakeholders. Which services do you feel need to be prioritized in the fiscal year 2021 budget, which begins July 1st? The general fund budget is set at $673.4 million. There are several ways to reach out and submit your questions and comments to the Council today and during the virtual Town Hall meeting Tuesday, June 2nd at 6:15 p.m. Send your email to budgettalk@atlantaga.gov. If you'd prefer, you can submit a video of your question, as long as it's 15 seconds or less. For social media, tweet us @ATLCouncil using the hashtag #ATLBudget. Submit your questions by messaging us on our Facebook page @ATLCouncil. To call in your questions, dial 404-546-1928, or you can text us at 404-548-2885.
We know how important the city budget is to you. We welcome your thoughts and your feedback. Thank you.
This is Council President Felicia Moore. Hello, this is Council President Felicia Moore, and this is our weekly update with our Mayor Keisha Lance Bottoms on COVID-19 and the city's response thereof. Is the clerk on the line to give the roll call? Okay, with the clerk not being on the line, I will do a roll call, and I'll just call out your districts and posts, and then if you could respond. So I will start with Post 1 at large. Post 2 at large. Post 3 at large. District 1. District 2, and Mr. Farroki did say he would not be able to attend.
Did you hear me? Because it says the lines are unmuted or something.
Yeah, I think they had you muted, Carla, though I did not hear you. Any other at-large council members on the line?
Bond is here.
Okay. Bond, Smith, Mr. Dickens, or Mr. Westmoreland? Okay. District 2, Mr. Farroki said he wouldn't be able to make it today. District 3? Okay, District 4?
Present.
Hello, Ms. Winslow. District 5? District 6? District 7?
Aye.
Mr. Shook? District 8? District 9? District 10?
Present.
Ms. Boone? District 11?
Overstreet, present.
Thank you. District 12?
Shepherd, present.
Any other members that have not acknowledged your presence?
Councilmember Brown, present.
Thank you. We have a quorum present, and I'll turn it over to our mayor.
Thank you, Madam President, and good afternoon to you all. I hope that today finds you doing well. Thank you for your continued support as we navigate our now-normal with COVID-19. And again, I want to thank all of our employees, especially our frontline employees, who are continuing to go out each and every day to make sure that our city is still functioning, and to all of the staff that's continuing to do the work that often goes unrecognized, but it really has allowed us to continue to operate in a space that is, would be unthinkable under normal circumstances, and certainly even that more challenging, given what so many of us are dealing with in our personal lives. So, as asked earlier today by a reporter, if there's anything that I've been surprised by, and what I shared is, I've not been surprised by the resilience of our communities and of our teams, but I have been pleasantly surprised at how quickly we've been able to show that resilience. So, thank you again. Also, I want to take a moment to acknowledge this week, it is National Public Works Week. We know many of our public works employees are our frontline and central employees, so thank you to Commissioner Jackson for your leadership and your entire team of dedicated workers. We appreciate how you have pressed through these challenging times, and we've not had any interruption in service in our communities, and I think that really speaks so very highly to the team, the dedicated team of workers, that we are honored to call employees of the City of Atlanta. Memorial Day weekend is upon us, and it is, of course, the unofficial start of summer. With that comes additional challenges, as we see more people feeling comfortable going outside, socializing, and not always necessarily taking the appropriate measures that they should take, including wearing face masks and socially distancing. We've already begun to see an uptick in usage of the Atlanta Beltline, due in large part to the nicer weather and the longer daylight hours. We're going to continue to closely watch these numbers and see what is any impact the state reopening has on our positive cases in our city. I know that there were some updated numbers that came out around noon, but I can share with you the 9:00 a.m. numbers. As of 9:00 a.m., based on the most recent data, there were 40,157 cases with 1,724 deaths. Currently, we are aware of 25 City of Atlanta employees who have tested positive, and to put that in perspective, we have nearly 8,500 employees in our workforce. Over the past 10 weeks, we've seen a 31% reduction in overall crime, a 12% reduction in violent crime, 34% reduction in property crime year-to-date. Overall, crime is down 13%, violent crime down 12%, and property crime down 13%. Illegal street racing continues to be an issue around the country, as cities are experiencing lower traffic volumes. APD has been very aggressive in addressing this situation. Bloomberg Associates is also helping us with some benchmarking. I want to make it clear, they are not advocating that we close down any private streets or do anything in that regard as it relates to drag racing, but they are helping us just benchmark and evaluate what other cities are doing and how they are able to make a dent in this. As an aside, I share with you all, my ATO has some very definitive thoughts on this, but he told me yesterday he would not continue to discuss them with me if we continue to arrest people. So, I may have to get another source as to how we deal with drag racing in the city, with any recommendations that you all may have on that. Please feel free to share them with me and/or with our team. As you all know, last Friday, we received quality federal recommendations from the Advisory Council for reopening Atlanta. Again, thank you to Ingrid Tomasz-Jones, Robbie Ash, Joshua Williams for their leadership, and again, to Bloomberg Associates for helping to facilitate over five weeks of discussions from a cross-section of leaders across the city, with 60 leaders across the city, including CEOs, small business owners, university presidents, healthcare professionals, philanthropic leaders, et cetera. Our staff has been hard at work in reviewing all the recommendations and gathering input from additional key partners, such as the Atlanta Fulton County Emergency Management Agency. We will soon release the city's five-day reopening plan drawn from recommendations of the Council. We're also instructing our team to consider several immediate actions designed to support our residents and local businesses through this process. These ideas include repurposing public right-of-way to support economic recovery, and social distancing for impacted businesses. For example, we may offer repurpose on-street parking for to-go side pickup. There also could be expanded and streamlined outdoor dining permits, and a slow-street program to support traffic calming in our neighborhoods. All of these objectives will be aligned with the targets set out in the One Atlanta Strategic Transportation Plan, but we'll focus on delivering them in a timely way to fit the current COVID-19 condition. As I've said several times before, this reopening will be informed and driven by data. We are inviting the public to join us and review the same metrics we are using to make these key reopening decisions. Based on some feedback I received yesterday, I believe that we should be around date 11 in a decline in the cases. I know there's been some questions surrounding the integrity of the data that's being uploaded by the state. Hopefully, the information that we are relying on will remain valid data, but we will keep you posted on that. And very soon, there's going to be a dashboard, a daily dashboard website on our ATL Strong website that will be powered by Johns Hopkins, that will provide insight and updates regarding where we are at the city in COVID-19. It will highlight factors such as race, ethnicity, age, and insurance status, all critical indicators as we look to reopen our city both safely and adequately. In addition to the phasing plan, we will release our first installment of a weekly report that updates the public on each of our specific gatekeeping metrics. These are data points that will determine how and when we move on to future phases of reopening. Again, as I said, if the trend continues as we monitor it, in the next few days, we will begin to move on to Phase 2. There's not a big difference between Phases 1 and 2, but hopefully by next week, we will be in Phase 2. While the reopening phases are intentionally based on household metrics and not arbitrary dates, based on the data we've seen today, it is possible that as new COVID-19 cases and hospitalizations continue along their downward trend, we'll be in Phase 2 by next week, which is what we're calling the easing phase. We'll continue to be cautious and vigilant, but also recommending that we allow private small groups of 10 or fewer to meet with social distancing. We'll also open up more recreational options following the CDC guidelines for social distancing and other precautions for our residents. This could include allowing single tennis matches, limited reopening of our golf courses, and lap swimming at our aquatic centers. All of this, of course, will be done with great caution and with safety measures in place. Our Parks and Recreation Team has also made great strides to prepare virtual starts to Camp Best Friends, as our children, mine included, are finishing up the school year and will need additional structured activity. Looking ahead to Camp Best Friends, if the data continues to trend positively, we hope that we will be able to offer modified and right-sized in-person programming as early as July. Of course, this will only be possible if we are able to ensure social distancing. Our staff will undertake rigorous cleaning as we move through these phases, and we will be tracking several metrics in recognition that at some point, we may have to take a few steps back in the event that we experience a resurgence. I know there have been questions about the reopening of City Hall. If everything were to go perfectly, we would not be able to open City Hall per our phased approach before July, but of course, this is something we will monitor weekly and will keep you updated on that. We continue to be thankful to our partners and our residents for their support of ATL Strong, the ATL Strong Fund, the Strength and Beauty Fund, and the Create ATL Relief Fund. Most recently, Google joined our efforts by contributing $50,000 to the Strength and Beauty Fund through the United Way of Great Atlanta. Additionally, in the spirit of ATL Strong, employees of Google Atlanta and google.org, Google's philanthropic arm, are donating relief funds for families throughout Atlanta who have been impacted by COVID-19, who are grateful for their partnership. This week, I issued three administrative orders to assist residents and businesses during COVID-19. The Department of Watershed Management will continue to refrain from taking action, which would result in the termination of water services due to non-payment. Secondly, all parking enforcement, or we will refrain from enforcing parking regulations right now, which would result in the towing or mobilizing vehicles in restricted areas of the cities right away. The third order directs APD to continue refraining from enforcing prohibitions against the sale of unopened wine and malt liquor beverages by the package for off-premises consumption by restaurants and eating-drinking establishments, like for the sale of those beverages. And in the midst of this pandemic, Atlanta continues to be an attractive place for new and expanding businesses. I began this morning chairing our Invest Atlanta board meeting, very glad to see that affordable housing, incentives, and many other incentives are continuing in the city. Last Friday, May 15th, Microsoft announced they will open a new $75 million facility in the city, anticipated to open in the summer of 2021. This investment will create 1,500 well-paying, high-tech jobs in the Atlantic Arts Complex at Atlantic Station, and a variety of those new jobs will be available across multiple skill sets. Also, I want to acknowledge the hard work done by the Georgia Department of Economic Development in partnership with Invest Atlanta, the Metro Atlanta Chamber, Georgia Tech, the Development Authority of Fulton County, and Georgia Power for making this possible. In closing, I want to wish everyone a safe and reflective Memorial Day weekend. This is an opportunity for us to honor the selfless sacrifices of our nation's fallen heroes, and as we pay tribute to those who lay down their life for our great country, I encourage everyone to prioritize health and well-being in their families, and also pay gratitude to all of those men and women who are keeping us safe during this time. Again, encouraging people, if you are out and about, please follow CDC guidelines. Make sure that you are wearing a mask if you are in crowds, and that you are able to socially distance at least six feet apart, and asking if you're 65 years or older, to please continue to stay home. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for that thorough report. I do want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Andre Dickens, and our clerk has been able to join the phone call. He wasn't able to get in at the appropriate time. Are there any other members that have joined us since we started? Okay, I will now go-
Yes, Madeline Archibong is here, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Archibong. All right, we'll now go to the sign-up list again. Members, if you do want to speak, please text me so that I can put you in the lineup. The first speaker is Mr. Bond.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for your report, and just wanted to say I appreciate these briefings. My first question is about probably the fall. You know, no one can predict how severe a resurgence of this virus will be. Experts say either by human means or seasonal, the virus will return. Are you keeping your advisory panel, M-panel, to continue to advise you as we move towards the unknown this fall?
They will certainly be available. So, the short answer is yes. Councilmember Bond, in addition to that, another meeting that I was in today, that I participated in, was with Bloomberg Philanthropies in conjunction with Harvard. There, I had the opportunity to be a part of their mayor's class last year, and the resources, you know, from Bloomberg are incredible. But part of today's session, we were able to hear directly from Dr. Fauci. So, in addition to, between the U.S. Conference of Mayors, our advisory panel, GMA, Bloomberg, we have access to an enormous amount of information in cities across the globe, where we will be able to benchmark and evaluate what's happening in other places as we make decisions on where we need to go as a city as a whole. Dr. Fauci mentioned today, you know, there is a belief that there could, there is perhaps a seasonal component to this, as with so many other respiratory illnesses. You do often see them decline in warmer months. That's not necessarily been the case with COVID, but still so much is unknown about where we are with COVID, but I think that everyone is expecting and bracing for a resurgence in the fall.
And my second, thank you. My second question is about the employees. Are employees that are moving forward as City Hall, we anticipate City Hall opening, and are employees going to be required to mask or top or protective gear, that those that interface with the public or in public work settings?
We'll make that decision. I can't imagine the set of circumstances, as I sit here today, that if we brought employees back in the City Hall, that they would not be required to wear masks, but based upon the report and the recommendations from our advisory committee, reopening city facilities like City Hall are one of the last. to be a part of their mayor's class last year, and the resources, you know, from Bloomberg are incredible. But part of today's session, we were able to hear directly from Dr. Fauci. So in addition to, between the U.S. Conference of Mayors, our advisory panel, GMA, Bloomberg, we have access to an enormous amount of information and cities across the globe where we will be able to benchmark and evaluate what's happening in other places as we make decisions on where we need to go as a city as a whole. Dr. Fauci mentioned today, you know, there is a belief that there could, there is perhaps a seasonal component to this, as with so many other respiratory illnesses. You do often see them decline and warm amongst. It's not necessarily been the case with COVID, but still so much is unknown about where we are with COVID, but I think that everyone is expecting and bracing for resurgence in the fall.
And my second, thank you. My second question is about the employees. Are employees that are moving forward as City Hall, we anticipate City Hall opening, and are employees going to be required to mask or top or protective gear that those that interface with the public or in public work settings?
We'll, we'll make that decision. I can't, I can't imagine the set of circumstances as I sit here today, that if we brought employees back in the City Hall, that they would not be required to wear masks. But based upon the report and, and the recommendations from our advisory committee, reopening city facilities like City Hall are one of the last few phases of that recommendation. So we'll certainly, you know, determine if there's some physical reconfigurations that need to be made, and also if there, what if any precautions our employees need to take to protect themselves. You've probably seen the stories, companies across the nation are having to physically redo the layout from their cubicles and so many other spaces to make sure that people are safe when they return to the workplace. Again, I, I am not, I am not feeling pressured or rushed to reopen City Hall, and I urge all of you all to resist that pressure as well. We want to make sure that we're doing what's best on behalf of our communities, and we know, especially in City Hall with communities of color being hit especially hard, that many of the people who will come inside and work inside of City Hall are members of communities of color, and also have family members at home who may have many of these underlying health conditions, that we need to be especially cognizant of.
Okay, thank you. And the last question, that's COVID-related, really more of a comment. I heard somewhere that in the discussions about what's going on with our HOPL program, that there was some discussion, and I don't know where it came from, but that perhaps the city should give that function to the state, and I just wanted to ask you not to consider that. I think the way that your administration has handled this unprecedented pandemic, I, that gives me confidence that you and your administration can fix the problem down in the HOPL program. I hope that that's just rumor that I've, that I've heard, and that, that will not happen.
Well, I, I appreciate that, Councilmember, Councilmember Bond. What I've said previously, I, I want what's best for the program, so it's something that we will evaluate. There are some delays that are inherent in our process in City Hall related to our legislative calendar, et cetera, that makes it a bit more challenging for us. But just as an aside, you know, I, I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind everyone that, that people are doing a lot of hard work, and it makes it even more challenging when they are doing that publicly. We have the outside challenges that come with the work that we do, certainly, but when you are, are being berated internally, that makes it even more difficult. And I can just tell you, as mayor, we have found it challenging to even attract and retain good people, because when people have other options, they often don't want to put themselves through the scrutiny, and quite frankly, the heartache that, that often comes with working for the City of Atlanta. So any words of encouragement that you can give publicly or privately to our employees who are doing this very difficult work, and we know that it's not always what it seems publicly, any words of encouragement to our employees, I'm sure would be greatly appreciated and would go a very long way for their morale.
Well, thank you for that statement, man. That's why I, I made the statement. I, I do have confidence in the City of Atlanta and its employees, and they could get the job done. So I wanted to put that out. But thank you for answering my questions, and Madam President, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if everyone will make sure that your phone is muted when you're not speaking. I think we're getting some feedback. Anyone else join the call? Okay, so now we will go to Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Madam President, and Madam Mayor, thank you for the update. My first question is, earlier this morning, there was a report that stated that the Thursday numbers represent 1,268 new cases, 40 deaths, and 105 hospitalizations in the past 24 hours. That seems to be quite a lot in just a 24-hour period. Has that by any chance kind of altered some of the original phasing, the reopening of the City of Atlanta?
We get those numbers three times a day, Councilmember Brown, so the numbers, I've been in meetings all day. I have numbers from nine o'clock this morning. I have not seen the noon numbers, and I did receive a message from your office on that, so I appreciate that. We're going to continue to look at the data and the trends. I can tell you, in one of the calls that I had with Dr. Fauci, I'm sorry, the sessions that I had with Dr. Fauci, was a part of, you know, he, he advised me across the country, you know, to be mindful that there will be some upticks at points, but really, we've got to look at the data overall and see which way we're trending. And so I'm sure, as we do every day, at the end of the day, and tomorrow as well, we'll take a look at the data and see how that's impacted where we are. But again, Bloomberg is helping us track this data, so I'm very confident that we'll have accurate data, and we're not just relying on what we are getting from the state, but also through Johns Hopkins. So we'll be comparing this data and the accuracy of it through some other outlets as well.
Yeah, and I appreciate, Mayor Bottom, you not being so steadfast in reopening the city, and you are being extraordinarily cautious. So I'm thankful for that, and thank you for all that you've been doing. My next question is around just a lot of the conditions, especially in low-income communities, with the young men and, and women selling water on the corners in our communities. A lot of times, this is their only access to money, and just in my district alone, we've had a number of arrests of water boys being arrested and some unfortunate deaths. And I know APD's been doing a really great job of trying to mitigate it, and I'm, I'm very thankful to Chief Shields and, and Major Collier for working with my office to see how we can be proactive. But I was just curious of what your thoughts were just around how that could be potentially addressed within the city. And I know Councilmember Dickens has been working on a plan as well. So I just think we, we need to address it because it's becoming a bit overwhelming, and I'm just afraid of what could, the, the potential impact could be if it continues to go unchecked.
So Chief Shields and I have discussed this, and I told her, in and of itself, I, I don't think people should be arrested simply for selling water. What Chief Shields has shared with me, that's not in and of itself what leads to an arrest. Is there other factors there, whether they are combative, whether or not, you know, they're, they're putting themselves or others in harm's way. As you know, the biggest challenge we have is, is the darting in and out of traffic, and I think that the ones who are selling water, who are more aggressive, are giving the other ones a very bad rap, because I encounter them quite frequently, and, and they're usually very polite, but we know that there are some who are very aggressive. Prior to COVID-19, Rashad Taylor was working on a plan that specifically targeted at, toward the kids who are on the corner selling water, to see if we could have some type of special training program. We were specifically looking at them perhaps to help us with some census work. Obviously, with COVID-19, that has changed a bit, but we'll continue as, as we evaluate where we are with summer jobs and our youth job program in general. I think that there is an opportunity for us to capture these young people who clearly have an entrepreneurial spirit, and perhaps formalize that and put into place some parameters and perhaps even some redirections that won't kill this, this very energetic spirit that they have, but will make it safer for them to, to exercise this entrepreneurial spirit, safer and profitable for them.
Definitely, and thank you for that. And I just, lastly, I just want to say that, you know, Chairwoman Jennifer Ives and your, your administration, your department has, have done an incredible job with going through the budget this year. This is my second year going through the budget cycle, and they've done a phenomenal job. So kudos to you and your team, and to Chairman Ives for all the great work that's been done so far.
Thank you.
Councilmember Overstreet?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and thank you also, Mayor Bottom. I want to weigh in on the water boy conversation, water girl. But the main problem, I would say, first of all, that it is probably district-specific, that every corner is different, different. I received lots of complaints because of people feeling that the water boys are very aggressive, and I've witnessed that they really are aggressive. They're tapping on windows, and it could be different, uh, people at different times. But not only that, there is, it, it really is no soliciting. Like, it's, again, it's an important violation. And there is no recourse for the water. We don't, they don't have permits, so we don't know if people will get sick from the water, if they will blame being sick from the water. You don't, don't know. The whole purpose of the permitting system is because of recourse, so that you'll know who is being affected by what and when and where. That's the whole problem with that. And the major problem on Southwest Atlanta is littering. The water boys have left a mess behind regularly. And so I get calls about cleaning up an area that is on the same schedule as everywhere else around Atlanta, but because they are stealing the water and not cleaning up behind themselves and bringing the carts from the facilities, and like Kroger and the neighborhood gas stations, they're bringing crates from there. They don't like the litter, because you all, everyone knows about the broken window theory. If your areas are littered terribly, then no one takes care of the area, and no one is excited about moving through the area. No one's excited about using the area. So there, it's, it's really a complex problem. It's not an easy yes or no, whether water boys should actually be on the corner or not. But I will say that my district gets a lot of negative calls about water boys. So I am happy to work with Rashad Ritchie, and Councilmember-
It's Rashad Taylor.
Taylor, sorry, sorry. Rashad Taylor. So you're talking about in your office?
Sure.
Sure, thank you. I'm happy to work with him, to come up with something for those entrepreneurial spirits, because it, it is a situation where we don't want them arrested. I never, ever want them arrested. But I do not want the, the litter, I don't want the violations of them not understanding what permit, the permit process is. I don't want them to not understand why people are feeling afraid and threatened when they're approached, you know, at their windows. It's, there, it's compounded. It's not very simple. It's not as simple as we'd like it to be. So I would love for it to be a teachable, a teachable time for all of them. And maybe we can use the At Promise Center for something like that, as well as, you know, speak with Rashad about programming, but the situation for water boys is not a yes or no. It just isn't. I also want to thank you, Madam Mayor, for pointing me to the Advisory Council for reopening Atlanta. The roadmap that we will use going forward for opening, using data, as you were specific in stating, is an important one. And thank you for allowing me to serve in that capacity, and thank you for continuing to keep us abreast of how we can stay updated with our COVID-19 initiatives and progress. Thank you.
Ms. Wissel?
I didn't know it was my turn, okay. What about Ms. Shepherd? I thought she was ahead of me.
Uh, Ms. Shepherd said that she did not want to speak.
Oh, okay.
Your turn.
Okay, and Mayor, just want to reiterate what others have said. Thank you for everything that you're doing. You've been a strong mayor, you know, for, really for the state of Georgia, as far as I'm concerned. And, and so that, 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 that's very much appreciated. I did want to mention a couple of things in regard to what Councilmember Bond said. I was not aware of that particular issue with grant management. And what I don't want us to do, Mayor, is, you know, the state, they cut so much out of their budget, and this is just my particular feeling. I think they're looking for money. And so, of course, they don't want public work, because that's where, you know, money has to be sent out. It's not taken in. So if they are talking to you or have mentioned something about taking over grant management, please don't let that happen. Whatever's happening in grant management can be corrected. What I believe, and, and when I worked in the city's planning department, I reviewed a lot of the applications coming in, and what I fear is that if it goes to somebody else, to the state, that people in the City of Atlanta will no longer get the kind of service that they are getting from the agency that we are giving monies to. And so that, that, that's my fear. And I think when we start parceling out departments to the state, then that weakens our position. And you've been very strong in your position, especially so much with the airport. I watched those hearings on stream, that I, I just think it's important for us to stay together. So I hope that whatever issues we may have internally or that the council people have, that we don't distort ourselves from within, okay, and allow something to happen where the state, you know, starts saying, hey, well, you know, you can't handle this, you can't handle that, so we're going to take that away. So I just want to say that.
So let me just clarify, let me clarify something, Councilmember. The state has not asked to take over grant management. There was a letter received where there were some people who had recommended, and I believe one of the council members recommended, that they take over some portions of it related to some specific funding. My response to that was that I was not opposed to the state taking it over if the state could do a better job. We know this has been a challenge for many years with the city, and again, it's inherent in just the way our process operates, that we have to go through a legislative process. There are, there are approvals, et cetera, that have to be received that just take time. So that was my response to that. And I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you. Oh, just hold on for one second, please.
Okay. I wanted to know what agency we can take over with the state. I mean, they're not doing a great job on everything.
This morning, I was in the middle of a call meeting with Invest Atlanta, and I remember one of my kids was not awake for virtual learning, and in this moment, I forgot that somebody had a doctor's appointment by phone. So it's the life of-
You are a mother before.
From home. So I apologize for that.
No, that- No, that's okay, but I would just hope that as a council, that whatever we're thinking, that we're thinking city and how we, and how, and how we need to protect the city, because that's what the state is thinking, okay? And so whatever issues we may have with each other, it should not ever override what we should be doing to protect the city, the citizens, the monies that come from the federal government. I mean, that's what all this thing is about the citizens. And I'm not talking to you, Mayor, I'm talking to everybody else, you know? And I don't even want to know what council member suggested that, but what I'm saying is we have to protect the city, you know, and its citizens. So, but you were speaking, and you, I got you off course, I'm sorry. You were saying.
No, that's my, I just wanted to clarify how that part of the conversation came up, that it was just in response to a request and some conversations that have been had. And again, you know, and I don't have to tell you this, this is public service, so when people work for the city quite often, they could make more money in the private sector, and it is doubly hard when you are sacrificing to do something that you think is for the good, and when your reputation is being smeared, and when you are publicly berated. And this is not just as it relates to this department, it's happening to many of our, many of our employees on any given day. And I can tell you, as we've tried to recruit people to the city, some very good people have specifically said that they are not interested in coming to work for the city because of the narrative and, quite frankly, the messiness that is hanging over our head. So that was just, that's just an aside, and for me, as the one who is entrusted with, you know, leading a team of 8,500 employees.
I got you. Well, maybe if they get the kind of mayor they want, maybe we won't have these investigations. I'm going to leave that there. I'm going to put a period right there, okay? I don't go any further than that. Let me go to the water boys, okay? The reason I asked, I know the officers in my area to, to, not to arrest the fellas, but to remove them off the expressways, the entrances and exits, is because somebody pulled a gun on one of those young men. And so I didn't want those young men to get hurt. And then, of course, what the police found out is that the parents, and I found this out about four or five years ago, the parents have been sending, in some cases, not in all, sending these young men out to make extra money. So if you've got a task force in terms of, you know, I'd be happy to work on that task force. I know they used to have a program called Junior Achievement. That was probably, they still have it, I think, on the north end of town. They used to have it over at Atlanta Metropolitan College at one time. But, I mean, these are young men that are obviously, you know, industrious, and, you know, they just maybe need to be put in a program so they can learn how to be young entrepreneurs. So I just wanted to say that, and thank you for everything that you're doing. We know you're under a lot of stress, okay? And we appreciate everything that you're doing, and I think we're in a great city. And I think contrary to, to, I hear what you're saying, and then I'll shut up. I hear what you're saying about people not wanting to come to the city of Atlanta, but there's so many businesses that are still interested, as you said, as it was said in the Investment Atlanta Budget Hearing, that, that really think this city is great. And I think that we're just going to have to weather this storm. You know, we're going to get through it. I'm not talking about COVID-19. We're going to get through this investigation, and we're going to be better.
Now, for clarification, Councilmember, I meant the city of Atlanta as an organization, not Atlanta as a city. I meant coming to work for.
Right.
Specifically.
I got you. I don't believe everything is in the Atlanta Journal-Constitution enough, okay? They said a whole lot of stuff about me for about six years, all right? I weathered the storm. I think we can weather the storm together. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown had a follow-up question?
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Bottom, I just want to say, you know, I came on to council a little over a year ago, and, you know, through the work and efforts of Councilmember Archibon, who at the time was Chair of CDHS, appointed me as the Chair of the Subcommittee for HOPWA. And for the last year, we've been working through the issues with HOPWA in collaboration with your administration. And I just want to say that, you know, I am unaware of any council member that was in support necessarily of the state taking over the HOPWA program. And in addition to that, Councilmember Westmoreland, as the CDHS Chair, and myself have been working collectively with the administration to work with the advocates that submitted the letter to HUD requesting the state take over, to see how we can come to some common ground and work through the issues to find solutions so that this doesn't happen, because we do believe in your administration. And, you know, folks need to understand that the issues we face with HOPWA have been extending for over 10 years. This is not, and this is not a specific administration issue. This is just a systematic issue, and we will collectively continue to come together and work through this. And the advocates have said, I just got off the call with the group this morning, and they said, hey, listen, we're willing to work through the issues to find solutions. We just need to fix it. And I think we're all on the same page, and we're all wanting to do the same thing. So I thank you, Mayor Bottom, for your support. I ask that you continue to have confidence in us as council members and within the administration to get this right.
Thank you.
Don't have anyone else to speak? Does anyone else have a question? If not Mayor Bottom, I do want to ask you a couple of quick questions that came up on Facebook. One, wanted to know about the CREATE ATL and when that application process was going to start?
I don't know the answer to that. I know we've had the resolution this morning with Invest Atlanta. I would think it's going to be immediately, but I'll try, while you ask your next question, I'll try and get an answer to that.
Okay. The other question was when, and this person asked more specifically, the License Review Board, but I've had questions from people about the boards and commissions getting up and running, and also license and permits, police and fire, because people are waiting to put in applications, I guess, have hearings, et cetera, from our various boards and commissions that are on hold.
So we just had a discussion about this yesterday. We are in the process of standing up those commissions and boards to meet virtually. In the next week, you will receive a survey that will help us to prioritize which commissions and boards need to be given priority to begin meeting, because obviously, it's going to take some support from our employees and perhaps require some to come back inside of City Hall. So we want to make sure that we have them prioritized, but this is a discussion I just had with the senior team on yesterday, so that will be happening very soon. But we can make a note of the two that you mentioned, giving those priority. And also, is Louisa on the phone? If so, can she be unmuted to speak to the CREATE ATL phone or either John King?
Sure.
Let's see, I just got an update on this. The application will be available the first week of June, and you can access it on the Invest Atlanta's website.
Thank you. And I did want to have one, just comment on the street racing issue, and I know one of the suggestions was perhaps a designated area or street, and I'm sure you've probably gotten some response, but if not, you know, many people in the public are not happy with that solution to the problem. And I guess my concern would be, or the concern will be, if we do go in that direction, you know, what street, what neighborhood, what area would be willing to sort of host that type of activity? So, you know, as you look at that, I hope you will consider that as well, because I think people are not wanting it in their neighborhood or anywhere near them.
Oh, no.
Because of the, the cars are so loud that people hear them from quite a distance.
Yeah, this would not be on a public street. This was, again, just saying that we are going to look at all options, but certainly not closing down public streets or taking this into anyone's neighborhood. And President Marcus, I'll just tell you, I just remember my mother, my mother had four brothers, and they used to drag race somewhere in the city. I'll have to ask her exactly where that was, but there used to be designated places for people to go, not public streets, but a designated location. And this is just one option that some cities have been exploring, and we talked about there are all things that would have to be considered. If we were able to find a location, what the liability would be, what the parameters would be, so I don't even know if that's going to be an option, but it's just one thing that we're benchmarking and looking to see if that's something that will alleviate it, but it would not be in anyone's neighborhood or on any public streets, I can assure you of that. And I believe Atlanta Motor Speedway has offered, perhaps as a location. So that's something that we are already exploring and thoroughly vetting that, and we'll keep you posted on that.
And I'm sure you may not know this answer. I just saw another person just ask about, and I'm only doing this because we have a few more minutes, when EBO certification applications and renewals will go online. So I don't know if you have the direct answer, but if you could at least get procurement or the Office of Contract Compliance to try to work towards that, since we're doing everything remotely.
Okay, well, we can give an answer to that for you.
Okay. Any other comment or question from council members? All right, Madam Mayor, if you have any closing comments?
Again, I appreciate your partnership and your leadership, and again, we know inside of City Hall how very hard our employees work, and I know that I'm guilty of not always verbalizing that to our employees, so it will just go a very long way, because it, this is a very difficult time on top of our ordinarily difficult challenges we have in leading the city. People just, you know, like everyone else, as leaders, we're balancing all of the things that the rest of our city and country is balancing, whether it be sick family members or losing family members, like Councilmember Bond, or whether it be managing virtual learning, like I know Councilmember Overstreet is doing, and any number of things, I could go down the list, whether it be personal health concerns, or whether it be just the isolation of not being able to be amongst each other. We're all dealing with the same things, and that's no, our staff is no exception to that. But even on top of that, in addition to continuing to run the day-to-day of our city, by the way, we received word today that we have officially crossed the 500,000 threshold in population for the city of Atlanta. So that's exciting. I believe our number is somewhere around 508,000 in population per the Census Bureau. In addition, in addition to managing, all of that entails, add on top of that COVID-19, and our team, this part of the team, you know, of course, is not going to receive hazard pay, hadn't asked for hazard pay, but they're working around the clock to make sure that we are where we should be as a city. And so I just ask that you all share your gratitude with them, if you feel so inclined, and, and hold us, continue to hold us accountable, but also just doing it respectfully and knowing, these are professionals, these are adults, and deserve to be treated with respect, and that's what we ask for, and I think, I don't think it's too much to ask for. And just one last note, again, the census, I still have not filled mine out. It is on my desk to do. It's very easy to do. Please, 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 we are lagging behind other cities. We're doing better than we did in 2010, but we are nowhere near where we should be. You can simply go online to fill it out, or you can call the 1-800 number if you have any questions about how to fill it out, please call 311. And hopefully, in the next few weeks, if we continue to be able to move through the phases as anticipated, we'll be able to get our teams back out and about to encourage people to fill out the census form. I know we've received an extension, but we still have a long way to go. And thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I do want to add, my course with the other council members in thanking you and your administration, as well as, I even want to say, council members and our staff on the council side for keeping the city going. I don't think this city has missed a beat, and other cities, as I'm talking to my colleagues in LC and others, they're lifting Atlanta up as an example of how we were able to have that continuity and keep going when we had to go remotely. So I want to make sure that my voice is there to thank each and every one of your administration, and again, to uplift the council members, as well as our council staff and the Municipal Clerk's Office for not missing a beat on the legislative side. And so with that, I would ask our clerk if he would please give us the adjourned roll call.
Today's briefing was held in accordance with OCGA 50-14-1. The adjourned roll call, President Felicia Moore.
Present.
Councilmembers Michael Julian Bond.
Here.
Matt Westmoreland.
Here.
Andre Dickens. Carla Smith.
Here.
Amir Faroki. Antonio Brown.
Here.
Cleta Winslow.
Present.
Madeline Archibon. Jennifer Ives. Howard Schuss.
Aye.
JP Masticai. Despen Hillis. Andrea Boone.
Present.
Marcy Colley Overstreet. Joyce M. Shepherd.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, I want to thank everyone for joining the call. Remind people to fill out the census, as the mayor has asked, and also make sure that you go and vote. Early voting is now open. Hopefully, you've sent in your absentee ballot application. If you have not received the ballot itself, be a little patient. They are getting those out as soon as possible. Thank you, and everyone, stay safe, social distance, and wear your mask. Bye-bye.